If I have your attention, we'll go ahead and get started today for our Friday, March 2nd Board Meeting. Ms. Jacobs, would you have the roll call, please?
Here.
Mr. Brown.
Mr. Coleman.
Here.
Dr. Decher.
Here.
Mr. Elmore.
Here.
Ms. Emery.
Here.
Mr. Erden.
Mr. Freeman.
Here.
Mr. Gunn.
Here.
Mrs. Hartham.
Here.
Mr. Jackson.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Senator Leavittman. Mr. Lee.
Here.
Mr. McIntyre.
Here.
Mr. Morwes. Dr. Red Kelly.
Here.
Mr. Stann.
Here.
Thank you. I think Mr. Brown appeared in the building, so I'm sure he'll be back. You've had an opportunity to look at the minutes, to review the minutes, any additions or changes to the minutes?
Will they be approved or submitted?
I have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. We'll move right into committee reports. We'll start with the executive affairs. We reviewed a number of topics this morning. First, I want to thank everybody for their attendance. We had a nice group, large group of trustees here this morning, covered a lot of items. We have one action item to come out of executive affairs, and you also had this item in November for review. Do I have a motion on that?
Aye.
Move.
I have a motion for Mr. Jackson for the resolution. And the resolution is the naming of Lake Coleman. William W. Coleman, as you know, is a longtime board member, respected resident of Florence, alumnus, longtime proponent of Francis Marion University and its programs. Enthusiastic proponent for establishing new athletic complex and enhancing the success of university. Do I get a second on that?
Second.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
I'd recommend we stop, but stop it with a lot of large mouth ass, and out of respect for the...
Large mouth.
Out of respect for Mr. Coleman.
Ms. Jacobs, she's noticed that Mr. Brown is now here. He's announced his presence. Thank you very much. Actually, it's been stopped with Brim right now.
So far, yes, sir. That's correct.
I do think the large mouth ass would be more appropriate.
I think that's coming in April. They wanted to wait until it was going to be named for W., and they were sure.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Well, I would just say I've known W. a long time, and I can't think of anybody more deserving and loyal trustee and supporter of Francis Marion University, and certainly well-deserving. And I know that his family is very proud, as we are, and thanks for all your years of service and two terms as chairman. I'm not sure why, but God bless you and thanks for all what you did with that. I think they were so far apart, you forgot what it was. Again, thank you very much. Any other questions, comments, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations. We look forward to the dedication. I did make a mistake, which I do from time to time. Press has been notified. I do want to notice Dwight Dana, Florence Morning News, thanks for attending this morning. We appreciate your support and interest in Francis Marion. Moving into the committee reports, continuing academic affairs and accreditation.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. As usual, our committee met with the faculty chair, the associate provost for academic affairs and enrollment management, and the provost, and a number of other faculty, and heard reports, and also received a written compilation of the outstanding work the faculty has been engaged in over the recent past, and it always continues personally to impress the heck out of me, the work and the quality of work that's coming out of the university. But we did learn a couple of interesting things that I'd like to bring before the committee. As far as the strategic planning committee, and I know we've talked about that this morning and will continue to talk about that, but we heard that it's continuing to meet, that it's right on track, and then, and right now, they're looking at our mission statement, and they should, over the near term, have something, a summary for us to look at, but I don't have a date for that right now. Then we heard also that our enrollment division is considering some new software. We generally process about 3,500 applications a year, and, as you can imagine, it's very cumbersome and tedious to do that, and there are constant improvements out there on how to deal with evaluating these applications and responding to them, and so we're looking at a major upgrade in the enrollment, in the admissions office. And another item of interest that I thought was quite interesting, because I thought it was a dying breed, but junior ROTCs. They are still out there, and they're alive and well. So we are looking at a program, and we may, I believe, have just started doing this, bringing them together with the ROTC program here on campus and allowing those junior ROTC candidates to get one hour of university credit. And I think that's just a wonderful, a wonderful way to bring role models to these young men and women who are out there, and also give them some university credit as well, and steer them towards Francis Marion. I just, that program is a wonderful program. I grew up with that program in the military schools, and I just, I just am happy that we're looking at that right now. Then we heard from the provost, and in your packet, there are two resolutions that we'd like to bring before you today. The first is under tab three, and I'm sure everybody has had a chance to take a look at this. And our committee has approved bringing as a recommendation for consideration of approval to the full board, the Master of Science in Nursing and Nursing Education Degree Program. And the resolution, as I said, is in your packet. But one of the other things this resolution does is it slightly revises our mission statement to include nursing and these knowledge-based sciences in our mission statement. So, Mr. Chairman, that comes as a recommendation from our committee.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Anybody? Just a couple of comments. Certainly, the nursing program as a whole is a real success and has been a real plus for us, and I think certainly has enhanced this university and is going to continue to grow. I'm not sure if you want, somebody want to say anything else about the program as a whole?
I would never miss out the opportunity to...
I thought you wanted...
You know, we started out with producing 32 nurses a year out of that standalone program. Now we're producing, I think, Ms. Provost, we're probably producing now about 125, 130 nurses a year out of those programs. That's inclusive of both the BSN nurses and the R N BSN nurses, those technical school graduates that went into nursing, and they are coming back to Francis Marion University during their faculty degree. So in about five years, a little over five years, we've increased the output of that program fourfold. So yes, sir, it has, it's not only returning wonderful dividends for the university, the men and women enrolled in the program, but it's beginning to change the health care profile of a region.
And I'm sure many of you, like myself, I get a number of calls about the university, but a lot of them are regarding the nursing program and where it is, and mainly can they get in the program or can I help them? So we have the motion and a second for approving Francis Marion University Master of Nursing, Nurse Educator Degree Program. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes?
Secondly, there was another degree program that we voted to recommend to the full board, and that's the Bachelor of Science in Pharmaceutical Studies Program. And this is an interesting program in the fact that our students will be able to do three years at Francis Marion University and then go to a School of Pharmacy in South Carolina that fourth year. After having successfully completed that fourth year, their credits will come back to the school, and Francis Marion will get credit for having graduated a candidate. How that works now, as I understand it, most of these students who go on to pharmacy college spend three years here, and then they go four years to the School of Pharmacy, and they kind of, they don't kind of, they don't get counted in our graduates, in our number of graduates. So now we'll be able to count those, plus affiliate ourselves with the Schools of Pharmacy in a more cohesive way. So we recommend that for approval, sir.
I have a motion from the chair to have a second.
Second.
For approving the Francis Marion University Bachelor of Science in Pharmaceutical Studies Degree Program. Any other discussion or comment regarding that program? No comment? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution passes. Moving along to Mr. Tracy Freeman, Development and Alumni Affairs.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning.
My first report comes from the Development and Foundation area. First of all, the alumni scholarship reception was held on February 7th. It had both the TAs from the donors and the students and faculty and staff. It was a very well-attended event. Next is the golf tournament and auction. The golf tournament will be held on next Friday, March 9th, at the Country Club of South Carolina. Teams are still available for that event. The athletic auction usually was held the night before, but we have done a change now. It's going to be held on April 26th at 6:30 in the Performing Arts Center. For further information, if you want to see, you can learn how it's ordered for that. The National Profit Leadership Institution, they would have their, celebrating their 10th year anniversary, and they have like a long get-together down March 23rd, 24th in Myrtle Beach. And then the rural institution for the leadership institution have just opened up a new medical clinic just last week on the 28th of February in Dillon, South Carolina. And that was very well-attended. I think it opens like four days a week, if not five days a week. They actually have secured a grant from a company, I think it's Lucas Book Shield, $50,000 to help out with equipment. Local bank actually helped give some other furniture and so forth there. And so everything virtually, they only have one person, full-time staff, and then they have the doctors and so forth, give voluntary time nurses. From the alumni side, the annual alumni membership and awards dinner was held on January 26th at the Performing Arts Center. It was greatly, very well-attended, approximately 150 people was there. Our own Dr. Sherida Bowsmith, a two-year, excuse me, twice graduate, she was the volunteer of the year. Dr. Toby Nelson was '01, preceded Benjamin Wall Ingram, young alumnus. And then Mrs., Mr. John Nichols, he's an attorney out of Columbia. He was the class of '78. He was the outstanding alumnus there. Followed that after was February 13th through the 18th was homecoming week activities. Hopefully, all of you, some of you did attend. I attended, and it was quick. It was a great success, ramping up on the 18th, excuse me, the 19th with the homecoming game. The School of Education also throughout that week held their alumni awards reception on that Thursday night at 6:00 PM. And novice education award went to Benjamin Daniel, class of 2010. Veteran educator award went to Victoria Renee Williams-Couper, recent graduate of 2011. And then administration award went to Robert Randy Smalley, graduate of '78, and also graduate of 1990. Then thereafter, the next morning at 7:45, the School of Business Leadership Award breakfast was held on Friday morning at 7:45, again at the Performing Arts Center. It was greatly well-attended, approximately 100 people that morning. And the Morgan B. Coker Outstanding Alumnus Award was presented by Dr. Catherine Edward Jackson, class of '82, and it was great to have Mr. Coker there to present this award, and she's currently at Tubman State University, I think, Missouri. Thereafter, an upstate alumni reception was held on February 9th at the Point Set Club in Greenville, South Carolina. It was hosted by very own trustee, Dr. Franklin Elmore, and Mr. Brad Bowles. We do appreciate you holding that event, very well-attended. Dr. Fred Carter and other associates from the university, great greetings, along with our president alumni association's James Harold. On March 24th, SAA will be participating in a great American cleanup throughout Florence, and then they're going to wrap it up with a, launching their Tim Hort Parks. So if you all see them on the side of the road, don't, you know, try to give encouragement to pick up some trash. And this is one of their large community events throughout the year. And in to wrap things up, on May 5th at 10:00 AM, it's not race weekend this time, thank God, we will be having commencement in the university center. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Freeman. Any questions for Mr. Freeman for Development, Alumni Affairs? Thank you, Ms. Freeman. Financial affairs, facilities, stores, back and forth.
Mr. Chairman, our committee reviewed the budget summary, found on tab six in your notebooks. Everything is going very well financially here at the university. We've passed just over 60% of the year. In the revenue, on the revenue side, we've collected about 96% of our revenue for the year, and we have expended approximately 57%. So we're under budget on expenditures and in good shape there. You'll note that the employee headcount has remained stable, and you'll also note that the percentage of total undergraduates receiving some form of financial assistance has increased from last year, about 2% up to 85%. Any questions about the budget summary? Our committee also entertained the resolution for the adjustment of the information technology fee, found on tab five in your notebooks. This is resolution 3-12. This adjustment is necessary to create a stable revenue source for our ever-growing technology needs here at Francis Marion. It has been unchanged since it was adopted in 1995. Our revenue source of lottery funds has been unstable at best and in fact decreased over the last few years. So it's necessary for us to create a stable source of revenue to support this technology system that we have here at Francis Marion. It will be phased in over three years, beginning in the spring of next year. Our committee unanimously approved this resolution, and I'll bring it forth to the full board for their approval and make them fold up a motion.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. So Chair moves to have a second.
Second.
For the adjustment of the information technology fee, just to repeat, $50 per semester effective with the spring term 2013, $75 per semester effective spring term 2014, and to $100 per semester effective spring term 2015. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, a question. So currently, it's about $200,000, $230,000. Is that roughly what we drive?
May I respond to Chairman, to trustee Brown's question? Jimmy, more critically, what's happened with that source of funding? When it was originally provided to us, it came out of the, it was appropriated out of the lottery proceeds directly. Now it's been kicked over to the unclaimed prizes section. So what happens is the, it's not exactly the amount of money that's appropriated, it's a percentage of what's appropriated based when we see what the unclaimed prizes is. The last two years, Jay, off the top of your head, can you tell me what the allocations have been the last couple of years?
This year, it's $188,000, sir. Last four days, it's a little over $200,000.
When it was first appropriated, we were receiving about $900,000 a year. And then we went down for a number of years, it was about the $500,000 range. Now that's been kicked over into the unclaimed prizes, Jimmy, it's generally in about the 100,000 to 200,000. I suppose that's good news for those who have won prizes and are claiming them.
Potentially, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Because my question was, you know, is that enough?
Yes, sir, I think it is. I think we've looked comprehensively at what the cost of system is, what it costs to maintain this. As, I appreciate you asking the question because it allows me to explain that we're moving responsibly to implement this over a three-year period, one increment at a time. When we get to that third year, we'll be in a good position to sustain the infrastructure we have in place.
So with all the ongoing challenges with data security and all...
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I'll note that even when it's fully implemented, we'll still be well below most of our sister institutions in the state.
Yes, sir. You know, I'll resist the temptation to go through this, but the provost actually provided me a list of the, a list of the fees charged by state colleges and universities, and I'll just take one second here for an illustrative point to this board. Here are the fees charged by Francis Marion University.
There aren't very many.
I'll just, I'll choose another institution, just chosen at random. Clemson.
Oh.
Here are the fees charged by Clemson University. So you get some comparison. Remember, Francis Marion University, the best educational value in South Carolina.
And the only undefeated football team on...
And the only undefeated football team, yes, sir.
Did we get a second to vote on this?
Yes. We're still in discussion.
What is it currently?
$30.
Wow. Any other questions, discussion? Again, you know, you hate to raise fees, but you got to stay competitive, and the cost of equipment and technology is pretty high. When you compare our fees to other institutions, there's still a weight below in the number of fees and fee structures, as you just saw, certainly doesn't even compare. So no other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution passes?
Next, Mr. Chairman, just note for the record that President Carter appeared before the Education Subcommittee of the Ways and Means Committee, his annual, annual visit there, and made several requests to the committee that included funding for the nurse practitioner program, the future clinical physician assistance degree program, some deferred maintenance projects, and then some capital projects that we have continually asked for, for a number of years, and the School of Education, School of Business Building, and renovations of Founder's Hall. At this point, the committee has followed pretty much their formula from last year, and at this point, we have been awarded $100,000 in nonrecurring money for the nurse practitioner program, and 1.1 million in nonrecurring funds for the capital improvements, repair, deferred maintenance projects here on campus. So that's where it stands at this time. Own facilities, the athletic complex is nearing completion. The plaza work is progressing well. There are sod and palmetto trees that will be placed in front of the fieldhouse soon. Parking lot and roadway paving is scheduled to begin this week and completed by mid-March. Baseball, softball, and soccer buildings are 90% complete. Fieldhouse is approximately 80% complete. All three playing fields have been punch listed, and the general contractor is working to complete all remaining items so it can be turned over and accepted by the university. Foul poles, home plates, pitching mounds, bullpens have all been constructed. Backstop bedding is installed on the softball and soccer baseball fields. Oh, excuse me, it will be installed on the 5th of March. The lake and bridge work is 85% complete. So it's getting close, and if all holds well, we'll have a dedication ceremony on April the 4th, and then, of course, looking forward to the USC game on April the 11th. So making progress. Hopefully, we'll be able to meet it. Also, lastly, we talked about a master plan that will be under study for the present outdoor athletic facility fields out behind us here. Mr. Gary Brown is architect, who's been out and looked at the facility and studied it on several occasions, will be coming to our August retreat and reveal some potential plans for the future use of our existing facilities out there once we move from the existing facilities, and that will all be done at the August retreat. And that concludes our report.
That's an excellent report. So are there any more, Murray? Tickets for the South Carolina Francis Marion?
Yes.
I thought you told me it was sold out. I mean, he's got like 400 messages on his phone. This is your chance to say it's sold out. Okay. On TV. Would you agree, Mr. President?
What's the highest level at Swamp Fox Club?
Oh, yeah, well...
Anyone interested in that, we might be able to find a couple of tickets for it.
Endowed scullish.
You know, I could find a dozen tickets or somebody make a contribution to finish that fieldhouse over there. If the trustees want to think about that for a couple of minutes before they respond to it.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. Mr. Eddie Gunn, Student Affairs and Athletic.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We met earlier this morning, and we heard from Teresa Ramey, Vice President, about the activities, the student activities on campus, which have been quite, quite busy this past fall and end of the spring. One of the big projects they have coming up in the fall is a dance marathon that will be taking place on campus here with benefit of Children's Miracle Network. And we anticipate that to be a 12-hour affair and be sometime around the end of September. Among the other things that are going on in the Student Affairs is a Student Leadership Conference taking place on March 24th. The Annual Career Fair will be on April 11th, same day as the baseball game. And there'll be a number of summer camps taking place on campus, both for teachers and students, all during, between May and July. We always welcome the opportunity to have, have that activity during the summer. We had a report from Student Government Association, Cody Simpson. Certainly thank him for his leadership and his being there. I think they're certainly in good hands with that. Cody has worked very closely with Teresa and with Dr. Carter on a number of projects, including the 2012 Patriot Pride Homecoming Parade, and we, expanding the SGA to include a judicial council. They had a town hall student forum this past February, and many staff members were asked to attend and had good attendance there. The students also are participating in the South Carolina State Student Legislature later this spring, which Cody has been named the Secretary of State. Certainly a distinct honor for him to do that. We heard from Athletic Director Hartzler on a number of things involving the athletic program. I'm not going to repeat everything, and some of this is, was covered in the facilities and a meeting as well, but everything's going well. We did, Murray did hire a new soccer coach in February this year. His name is John Campbell, and he, expect great things from him. Those who also would like to know that the average, grade point average for the student athlete at Francis Marion is 2.80, which compares to the campus-wide GPA of 2.36. Spring sports are going well, and the biggest thing right now, of course, is the completion, the successful completion of the athletic complex and the fundraising, which continues to take place at the Swamp Fox Club, which we, this past year, we raised $167,517, which is about 2% over last year, but a little bit short of the '07-'08 high of $184,000, $110. So if you happen to join, we'd be happy to accept your checks. And as far as the baseball game goes, just to reiterate, there aren't any more tickets, so that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Gunn. Any questions for him? Moving along, President's Report, Dr. Carter.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Let me begin by apologizing to trustee Brown. I've been sitting here counting these pages, and USC Columbia actually has two more pages than Clemson on those fees. So Jimmy, I was brusish in my, in my reprimand.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Let me, let me take it, be serious for a second, and trustee Gunn was gracious enough to mention our SGA president, Cody Simpson's contributions this year. You know, I really want to take a second and echo those remarks. Cody's done a remarkable job as SGA president this year, from the student legislature to organizing the homecoming parade, to, to the initiatives, the volunteer initiatives that he's pushing through student government. This has been a banner year for Student Government Association on this campus, in no small part to Mr. Simpson's leadership. Cody, would you stand up and let us thank you for what you do? Thank you, Cody. That means we only expect greater things next year. Trustee McIntyre... Trustee McIntyre talked about our budget request at the Ways and Means, and so far, I think we're doing large part to the support that Daniel Dukes and Jim McGee provide us. We've been very successful so far with those appropriations. We'll add to that, or seek to add to that when it goes to the Senate side. We, I doubt that the deferred maintenance money will increase much more above the 1.2 million, roughly thereabouts, but, but I do hope to see that, that nurse practitioner dollars, I hope to see those go from maybe $100,000. We're going to push as hard as we can to try to get that, that amount up to $750,000 when it gets into the, into the Senate. Maybe nonrecurring this year with the expectation that we could transition those dollars to recurring dollars in the years ahead. As, as we discussed, as trustee Hartung discussed when she brought the Academic Affairs Committee report, our nurse practitioner program and nurse educator program is just ready to go. And next January, we'll enroll, we'll enroll 32 men and women. Thirty of, excuse me, 32 men and women, 20 of those in the nurse practitioner program, and 12 of those in the nurse educator program, and that'll become the foundation class. And I think we'll see a pattern very similar to what we saw with our BSN degree in nursing. We'll see over the next five to six years, those numbers grow incrementally, probably not as, as quickly, not as dramatically as, as with the bachelor's degree in nursing. But we'll start seeing our graduates go out, not only across the PD, but other rurals of the state, areas of the state, and making a profound difference with regard to their practices. This, again, I think, is a very, very unique degree program at FMU that will likely truly change the nature of the services we provide to the communities around us. Which is a wonderful segue to the next topic. We, and you, board members will recall, in the fall, we talked about beginning a feasibility study for a nursing degree, I mean, excuse me, an engineering degree. Look at the possibility of developing a degree, maybe an industrial engineering or process engineering. We had a faculty committee into the fall and early spring work on that, led by our own Dr. Peter King and Dr. David Peterson and Dr. Susan Peters. All three of them were on that committee. They brought back a, just an exemplary, a model of a feasibility study, and presented that to the provost and me, I think, Rich, in late January. The dollars look good, we think it's achievable, and we will, having discussed this with the relevant faculty members and certainly the members of the board, we will begin the process later this spring of, of starting that degree program approvals with the Commission on Higher Education. Will likely take the formal curriculum approvals to the faculty for its approval. Keith, reasonable timeframe, probably late next fall, the following spring. And then probably about a, I would guess, maybe a year from this June, we'll bring that industrial engineering degree back to you for formal approval, with the expectation that we would start a bachelor's degree in industrial engineering here. No earlier than January of 2014, no later than August of 2014. So we would, if you follow the thoughts again, we create our Bachelor of Science in Nursing degree back in 2004. We will add in January 2013, the Master of Nurse Practice and the Master Nurse Education. And then in January 2014, August 2014, we'll look to add a bachelor's degree in industrial engineering. You know, I could, I could go on and on sentimentally about this degree, but this is also a degree that becomes a very, very real ground changer for those industries that are located across the PD region of South Carolina. This region of South Carolina, the entire northeast region has never had a, an engineering degree, if you call it so. This will be the first such degree. I think this time is ripe for us to do it, and we will, Mr. Chairman, move forward with that, with the understanding that subsequently it'll go to the faculty for their approval, and then it'll come back to the board for the board's formal approval. Let me say this, while we're on the issue of degrees, bear in mind, from the very beginning when we talked about the nurse practitioner degree, we said within two or three years after that degree, we would bring back to you a prototype for the physician assistant degree. And, and we will do that. We'll begin that nurse practitioner degree in 2013. About the time we're starting the Masters of Industrial, excuse, the Bachelors of Industrial Engineering, we'll likely bring back to you a prototype for the planning cycle for approval for the physician assistant's degree. Hopefully, with that PA degree in place here, sometime late 2015, early 2016. So that's, that's pretty much your curricular chronology going down the road for the institution. Murray's talked, we've talked about the athletic complex. You know, Jay talked about the technical excellence of that. It's a stunning facility. And it's, I was walking out the other night, out of the back part of the McNair Science Center, and that complex was lit up. And it really just, it adds a dimension to the university that in the past has all been woods. And now it's just a, it's a beautiful frontage to the, to the university, and it'll be a nice complement. And again, and let me point out, not just for intercollegiate athletics, but also for intramural athletics and for recreational opportunities for our students on this campus. This is not simply a facility for jocks. It's also a facility for men and women who want to have more, more recreational and exercise opportunities on this campus. And I think it'll, it'll be a welcome addition. While we're in the topic of additions, you know, in two short weeks, we send a group down to Ecuador, the wilds of Ecuador, to open our research station in Ecuador, Wild Samaca. And we briefed the board on this before. This is Travis Knoll's project. Travis has worked, Ms. Provost Travis has worked almost two years bringing this project up. We're going to formally open that research station and that study lab in, in two weeks. I will tell you that trustee Eddie Gunn is going with the group down there. And Eddie and I were talking earlier about ensuring all of his shots had been finished. Travis knows we'll go, we'll go with that group. Of course, it's Travis's station. Peter King's going to take the group down there, and, and my friend Glenn Gorley's going to go. Now, now, as all of you know, Glenn is actually a theater professor, and so we might scratch our heads and wonder why, why Glenn's in this Gus group, but Glenn's going as a representative of the faculty leadership. But Peter, I want you to know that you have the formal responsibility to ensure that Glenn gets back here, okay? So we think they'll have a, we think they'll have a wonderful time. Mr. Chairman, on a sober note, just for a second, we will bring you at the, at the June meeting, we'll bring you the, where we stand with regard to tuition, tuition recommendations that might come to the board. I will tell you at this point, we all, we all understand how serious the tuition business is. Before that comes here, we will, we'll go through that very, very carefully, discuss that with both the faculty leadership, leadership of the board, and we'll work diligently to ensure that we keep that, that increase as moderately, as moderate as it can be, given the nature of that. Trustee McIntyre mentioned, we will have a master physical plan for the university before the board at its August retreat. It's a good thing. It's been about 12 years since we've seen our last physical master plan of the university. There's been a lot of buildings going up during that last decade. You know, this isn't the university it was 10 years ago. 10 years from now, it won't be the university it is now. So it seems to me every few years, stopping and updating that master plan and asking the board to provide clear input and, and ideas and suggestions is a very, very positive thing. We'll also, and I think this is a good thing, we'll also bring the strategic plan. Now, those are two very separate documents, but there are points at which you'll have to be tied together, obviously. Whatever you want to do in a curricular sense, in most instances, needs some support with regard to the, the physical and geographic support on, on the campus. Finally, two things very, very quickly. We partnered with the Florence Morning News this past, this past week. Dwight, we had, the Morning News and Francis Marion awarded the first three Marion medallions to men and women across the PD who have made, who have made distinctive and sustained efforts to improve the lives of the citizens of this region. And as many of you know, Henry Johnson, Hayward King, and Marcia Vaxley were, were selected as the initial three recipients, three people richly deserving. I, I thought the, the process went very, very well. Dwight, for you and the Morning News, I want to tell you how terrific it was for us to be able to partner with, with the Morning News and, and, and starting that process. Dwight, I think that process will go on for a long, long time. And I have to tell you, there's, there's nothing more enjoyable than identifying and recognizing the good work of other people across this region. Finally, let me sum up, Mr. Chairman, by just saying commencement's coming up on May 5th. The commencement speaker and the, and an honorary degree recipient will be the Chair of the Faculty, Keith Best. I can't quite get a date as to when the last time was that a faculty member actually delivered the commencement date, but people talk sometime around Nero, maybe Caesar, and, but we're all looking forward to Keith's comments. Keith has promised me that he would keep his commencement comments under an hour and a half. We'll also recognize at commencement Ambassador Joe Melrose. Many of you remember a few years back when we did our UN Symposium here, Ambassador Melrose came to campus, was a critical part of that. Ambassador Melrose has held ambassadorial rank to three different countries in the past, and he's worked diligently with us, starting our Model UN program here. So it'll, it'll be an absolute joy to recognize him. And finally, and I, I'm, save this one for last because this one is so, so close to many people around the table, we're recognizing our third honorary degree recipient will be Dr. Johnny Bruce. Many of you know Johnny, he's a very prominent dentist in town. He has worked, he's spent his life working in dental practice in this area, and he's, he's helped literally thousands of people and patients in that process. Johnny also serves as the Vice Chair of the Doctors Bruce and Lee Foundation. And so we're recognizing not only for the great medical and dental work he's done in the community, but for the great philanthropic work he's done as a member of the Bruce and Lee Foundation. Mr. Chairman, that's my report. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any questions for the President? Any unfinished, finished business? Here are none, any new business? Well, with that being said, here are no further business. I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Meeting is adjourned.